We'll call the meeting to order. Roll call.
Okay, Mayor Westergaard.
Yep.
Wolfman.
Yes.
Mueller.
Here.
Reese.
Here.
Stankin.
Here.
Okay, public forum. Bob, would you like to address the council?
Uh, yes.
Step right up.
Stayed right. Um, there's a couple three things that I think.
Tell them who you are.
I'm Bob Summers. Uh, in a nutshell, pragmatist, realist, uh, perceptive, persistent, rebel, patriot. I'll not turn my back on the law. And the blind eye, like it's being done around some things. It's no excuse. Uh, the laws and ordinances, they must be upheld. And not altered. Anyway, there's, there's... In the morning hours, there's no coverage with the police, because they don't have enough staff. So the rush hour traffic, I see it every morning sitting there drinking coffee. And I know they're just hauling right onto the stop sign. And it's, damn! Isn't there some way that they could rearrange the hours? Or maybe have a split between shifts or something, so they can get some people in that hour and a half, two hours in the morning? It's all over town, I'm sure. But, uh... I can't see who they are in the dark. But it starts around 5:30 till 7:30, and then it's over with. On my street, which is Blossom. And there's one I seen this morning, I wish I had my cameras out. I've seen him before. It's not every day. He's a white pickup. He's got real long taillights. And he is just, he comes from the north and goes south. I don't know if he goes out to the lake, or turns on first or what. In fifteen minutes, here he comes back again. Boom! Right across the stop signs and north toward the city buildings. He don't hit the brakes, he just goes. I don't know who he is. There's a brown one that does that, too. Early in the morning. I mean, you know, we've gotta try to find a way to get these people to quit this. It's against the law. Anyhow. Another thing, I've asked Scott several times. I know that it's been worked on. That rerod out there at the dump, it's been worked on. But there's still some that they're not getting. And I was out there one day and I showed people that when I see them. You know, because I'm looking around to see if they're still there. And I still see some. And, uh, they're not very big. But they can puncture tires, or somebody could trip over them. And one guy said, "I did trip over one a while back." And I have myself. Back in June, I told Scott, I tripped over one. That's back when they were really long pieces. They'd cut them all off. Um, I started spray painting them yellow. And they're still there. I put a flag by one one day, and Scott went out, said he went out and looked at it. See what I was up to. He's seeing me on camera, I did that.
Oh, I was out there dumping my own stuff. I saw the flag, Bob.
I thought maybe he seen me. Wondering what I was up to. But, uh, I was glad my trailer was there when I tripped over one, because I had something to get a hold of. Um, if the city take their air compressor out there and blow the dirt away from it, they can cut it down below ground level and it'd be gone. There's only a few left. And that wire mesh we was talking about, Scott? I think they had a heavier gauge, like a eight gauge or something, real heavy. It's still, there's quite a few pieces of that sticking up. Like, almost pencil size. And some of those pieces of concrete. You know, they get shoved over with that, uh, backhoe when he pushes off. He's not digging, he's just pushing. So they're pointing away. So I'd like to see those, the rest of them disappear. And I offered to take my torch out and cut them. Well, I've got an inverter. I can take a grinder out there and cut them off, but Scott said no. So... It's public ground, I don't, you know... Well, it's just this piddly stuff that I think needs to be taken care of. Somebody's gonna get hurt out there, tripping over that. And, uh, there's no sign out there on the gate that says, you know, beware. There's rerod and stuff through tires. I told Scott, "If I puncture one, you're gonna buy me four." Because those are new tires on my truck. So... Why can't we get them cut off? Those two things are what I'm most interested in. Get somebody to help the police out a little more? Or try to adjust a little bit? And quit turning the blind eye on some of this stuff?
Well, talk to Royce, see if we can't do some shift changing, and now Bill knows about the rerod out.
We'll get them.
He'll take care of it.
Let's just end that little southwest or southeast corner mostly.
We'll get them.
They'll find them.
Because I would gladly go out there and cut them off, but I was told I can't.
Michelle, did you make a note of that?
Yes.
Thank you.
There's probably a liability going to get you there.
Yeah.
Insurance.
Yep. Thanks, Bob.
Thanks, Bob.
I would appreciate a little on that.
Marlon, you have something you'd like to?
Yeah. Do I have to go to the podium, or can I just?
You'd go wherever you'd like.
All right. I'd like to thank you guys, um, for hearing me out. I'm here to know what the city or the council is doing about our stray cat slash feral population. Um, and the people who feed them. That's the only way I know how to say it. Uh, I don't have a problem with people adopting strays, but it's more than just feeding them. I feel they should vaccinate them for distemper and rabies. They should be wormed regularly. They should be neutered or spayed if they're left outdoors. Uh, they should be collared, so that we know that they're not a stray. And they should be provided an outdoor kitty litter box. I have cats who shit and piss in my garden, shit and piss in my flower beds, tear up my flower pots and flowers in them. My deck area reeks of cat piss, and it's not for my cat. I keep my cat inside most of the time, unless I'm outside. And then when we go back in, we take the cat back in. I can't help but ask you, do you know how much fun it is to work in your garden, digging up cat shit? Or Nealian cat shit, or smelling of cat piss? Um, cats with worms can spread worms. Not only to other cats, but to me, too. And I don't take a wormer regularly. So I don't want to. I feel, guys, and y'all, that this, we need to sanction people that just feed cats. I mean, you gotta either fine them, sanction them, whatever, or euthanize the cats. Or I'll help you. I don't care. I gotta do something with cats. I mean, what would be the difference if I fed raccoons, skunks, or opossums? I don't see a difference. I mean, they're all just sterges running around in town. Wish I could bring in a few coyotes to help with the problem, but... I, to be honest, all of these three animals, the opossums, the raccoons, and the skunks, I've seen next door. And I don't wanna name names, I'm just saying that we need to do something with the cats.
I've seen that here in the United States, there was a city that had trouble with skunks. And they would, people would call the police to come do something about the skunks. Well, they finally figured it out. People are feeding feral cats. The skunks are coming to town eating the food.
So are the raccoons. I actually have pictures. I have a picture of a raccoon right across the street, so...
So you know who's doing it?
Well, I'm not trying to name names. I think it's not just across the street from me, or any... I think there's other people that are doing it across town. I mean, we just kinda gotta discourage this, or if they want... There's more to do adopting than just feeding that cat. You know, you gotta take care of them. I mean, there's, it's like taking care of a baby, you just don't feed it. I mean, I personally think they gotta be vaccinated, they gotta be taken care of. If they're not going to do that, I think that'll discourage them, in fact, that there's a lot of expense there. I mean, I just took my animals down, just had them, I had both my dog and my cat, had their shots taken care of. I'm telling you, I had worms, I wormed them. It's not cheap.
I'll talk to Royce tomorrow, see if we can't put a plan together to, uh, fix that problem.
Well, I'd appreciate it. Because part of the reason why my garden this year was weeds, was I got tired of working in cat shit, to be honest.
I'll talk to Royce tomorrow, see if we can't get something done, and he will talk to you. Let you know what we're gonna do.
All right. Thank you guys very much.
Thank you.
Yeah, absolutely. You know, we, I mean, went down and talked with her right away that same day. You know, about, about continuing to feed those and, and...
We don't think it works.
No. She, uh... She's, but no, we...
No, she didn't pick it out back, guys.
We had the discussion about, "Don't feed them on your front step," and she said, "Yeah," you know, she'd...
Don't feed them on the back step, no. So they're over close to the carletta down there. I'm sure the carletta hasn't said anything about it either, but...
We'll see if we can't thin them out. Okay, consent agenda. Any additions, corrections?
Thank you very much.
Thank you, Marlon.
Thank you. There is, there is one addition, and I didn't even bring the permit. I need to, I should get it for you. Ryan Renzi has a building permit for a ten-by-twelve shed in back of his garage. And Kyle has been there and approved, and approved that, but I, uh...
Did Kyle approve this one?
That one is approved also. Yeah.
Because they saw a signature by Kyle, right?
Done over the weekend, so yes. Uh, Kyle had, had, those are a couple of latecomers.
He doesn't then emails it to you that he's looked at it?
Yeah. It's all email stuff now. Anyway, Ryan Renzi lives at Madison and First, just south of the Lutheran church. And was putting a ten-by-twelve shed, abutting the north side of his garage.
Right side.
And it's fine. Yeah.
Okay, we have motion to approve the consent agenda.
So move.
Second?
I'll second.
Roll call.
Mueller.
Yes.
Reese.
Yes.
Stankin.
Yes.
Wolfman.
Okay, Resolution seventeen twenty-five. Eric, do you want to inform the council what we're doing here?
Yeah, I'm Eric Hoffman, the president of the Lethy Board of Trustees Library. And the editor's actually here to shoot the fellas. Uh, several weeks ago, we were approached to approve a big old drive-up personally, about the sale of a property east of the library at five-sixteenth Second Avenue for a very, or Second Street for a very reasonable price. The board actually voted that same evening to pay that property for thirty-five thousand dollars. Um, after that first vote, we had some more information come in, that if we purchased it, of course, it becomes property of the city. And if the city owned it, then we have, you would have to do a, especially as abatement, if there's such items in there. So after negotiating back and forth with the owner, and finding out what it would cost to demolish the residence, uh, we've come to an agreement with the owner, tentative that we would pay the owner thirty-five thousand dollars for the property. We would pay the owner to have him demolish the property, so it would not become city property until after that was demolished and taken away, for whatever that would cost, which was, the estimate was between four and five thousand dollars to demolish and haul away the house.
I do have a better estimate from the purchase, was at four thousand dollars then.
Four thousand dollars. Uh, so the city would like, I mean, the library would like to purchase this property, basically as a parking lot for the present time, you know, because there's no extra parking back in there at all. And though sometimes there's some parking issues with the clinic and the church having functions at the same time that the library's open. What the library's looking for is approval from the council to go ahead with this, with this tentative agreement to purchase the property at five-sixteenth Second Street, pay the owner for the demolition, pay the owner for the agreed-upon price of thirty-five thousand dollars, so approximately be about thirty-nine thousand dollars for the whole agreement.
And the library has these funds?
The library does have these funds on hand, yes.
Is there a survey gonna be done on that property? That's being purchased? Has there been one? How old's the one, if there was one? I mean, is there a survey on that property?
I'm sure there probably is. I'm not sure what the, you would have to...
I mean, just to make sure where your lot lines are, that you're... Yeah.
Yeah, that, we could, we could probably go with that, too, you know? We'll do it however the city instructs us to do it, in order to get the job accomplished, you know?
Okay.
Yeah, that's a good point, Tan, because we'd wanna...
You wanna make sure of what your, of the property is that you're purchasing.
There is a little bit of a question of whose property ends where, because of the neighborhood, so you definitely would wanna do a separate...
Okay, that'll be our next step.
Anybody have any questions for Eric?
I don't have any questions. I do have a comment. Mr. Tan, I did have the opportunity to review the, uh, the offer. Um, a couple quick things I had a question on was, uh, the statement in paragraph one, I don't know if you have it in front of you, if I do, okay. There's the last, the last, uh, oops, for the line and a half there. It says, "Provided buyers on possession are permitted to use the real estate for a library building and/or parking lot, subject to that." So, how do, how, at what point do we determine that it is a usable property, that they can use? Um, it's just an odd, odd statement in the line there, so I'm trying to figure out what the meaning of it is.
Well, that has to do usually with zoning or permitting. And so, this is an offer and an acceptance to contract. And so the actual documents would, uh, would not be entered into until we were, you know, here we're dealing with the city.
Right.
So, obviously, we think we're gonna be able to satisfy the zoning requirements, the permitting requirements, and those types of things.
Okay. And then, um... The, uh... It says, it says in paragraph six, "For the demolition of the house." It didn't mention anything about the garage. So, I do have somebody that talked to Gary Babe, um, this last weekend, and said he might be interested in the garage. So, he would, he would be responsible to move, remove it, um, before you guys take possession of it. But if he, if he isn't interested, I tried to get a hold of him, but I couldn't get a hold of him tonight. Um, if he isn't interested in it, then I think we ought to throw something into the offer about demolition in the garage, or you guys are taking a building, and you don't want that. That's all purpose of this.
Well, that's easily done.
Yep. All right.
Yeah, I just know that that cost estimate, I talked with Wartus about to get a cost estimate, it was...
Will it include the garage?
Did not include the garage at the time. Okay?
It'll probably be a couple hundred more, and it's not, it's not much to demolish. When we sell the garage, maybe we recoup twenty grand or so. Well, but you don't own the garage, that's the problem. If you want to own the garage, then sell it with the garage, but I don't think we want, that's about the whole purpose of this. Right, right. Um, and the other thing that Mr. Babe had, um, expressed was that, you know, he's just been doing some remodeling, so there's some brand-new, practically brand-new stuff in there. There's insulation that still has the plastic on it. Um, he just redid all the wiring, a brand-new breaker box. The heater and the air conditioner are a couple years old, and the brand-new water heater. So, he said that he'd be willing to donate that to the library, or the city, in this case, I guess. But, but I know the library's looking at building a new building. I don't know if they can use it for that. But I'd hate to demolish it if it's still in there. Uh, and that's, and that's one of the statements in here, in paragraph six, about, uh, "The, uh, the city will be permitted to remove any fixtures or other salvageable property prior to demolition. Said fixtures and salvageable property will be owned by the city after the closing." So, you guys can remove who, remove it from, with whomever you would like to remove it. Um, but, uh, once we get this approved, and it's a go, and I think that's a great gesture on his part. I mean, it's like seven thousand dollars worth of heater and air conditioner that he just installed not too long ago.
That's not coming with the thirty-five thousand, though?
That is with the thirty-five thousand. And, but that was with the building originally. But if we're gonna demo the building, we don't wanna destroy a brand-new air conditioner heater. When we can repurpose it.
Something that, yes.
So it'd be something that he was willing to go ahead and let go to you guys. Before the demolition. Before you demo it.
Yeah, and we did have, I guess, every intention of at least looking at the air conditioner, furnace, water heater, getting those out of there beforehand.
We can take those before changes.
Say some cost there.
No. This, this offer does not have a date of possession or anything like that.
There's no date of possession, or when's this all transferred?
There's no date of possession on the, on the contract. And, uh, I guess it's a November thirtieth, um, acceptance date. And then, the city has up to thirty days to, wants the acceptance to do any inspections or anything that they wanna do. So I would say do your surveys and, um, survey the property during that timeframe would work. But, uh, he's, he, he went this weekend and moved out all of his stuff out of the house. For the most part, it's pretty much cleaned out for his stuff. And then he's got some stuff in the garage that he still needs to move out. He's a truck driver, so he's only here on the weekend for a day and a half or so, and he's gone on the road again. And, uh, so, but, uh, but he's, he's ready to close whenever you guys are ready to close.
We're gonna know here in a minute.
Yes, sir.
Anybody have any questions for these fellows? Resolution seventeen twenty-five would take care of this.
Yes, that would, uh, prove the...
So then, yeah, the city will actually own the property, but it'll be kinda a parking lot for the church and the library?
Well, you know, it's, it's owned by the city for use by the library. And I guess it's, you know, up in the air then, as far as what the, what the church use would be.
What the use, you know?
You know, it, I'm sure the church would utilize it as parking, unless you would somehow restrict that.
So then, the city's gonna, what, pay for the cement work? Is that how that's gonna work, or?
I would, and I've talked with, that's my church there, too, and I've talked with them some about participating in the project somehow. So, and, and I'd really like to see that, somehow.
You're okay with that, and everything?
Yeah, I didn't realize there was a garage. We could probably just tag that in, in there. I can redraft this to put the garage part on there, and put some kind of a option in there as to whether or not we let somebody remove it after we close, or, uh...
You wanna do it before you close it?
Yeah, yeah, we want, we want it demolished before we close.
You're on the right of the buyer to allow somebody to remove it.
Right, yeah.
I know it's the wording, that's why, that's why I'm not a lawyer.
We need a couple days for Bill to get that stuff out of there.
Well, I've been working on this since Friday, so...
I bet. I can tell. I think Charles is not in.
I'll make a motion, we approve Resolution seventeen twenty-five, contingent on Dave getting those things into the acceptance.
I'll second it.
Roll call.
Wolfman.
Yes.
Stankin.
Yes.
Reese.
Yes.
Mueller.
Yes.
Thanks, Eric, and the library.
Thank you.
Okay, seventeen twenty-six is our quick claim deed behind north of the Egyptian vault.
Yeah, did, to follow what this was about, just that, so, um, Corey Weber is buying Egyptian Vault Company. And as they're doing the, the work on the property transfer, they discovered some inaccuracies then on, or inconsistencies about how the alley behind, uh, the burial vault company was sold to them. So if you look at page ten, that, that's just a, a plat kinda showing the area, and the light-colored circle is, is where the vault company is. Vault Company Buildings really sit on one, two, three, four, five. And then, see that alley to the north, but they also own most of six. So they wanted to acquire that alley to make that all into one larger parcel. Then it was nineteen ninety-three, the city council went through a process to take bids on that alley. Uh, did hold a public hearing on the sale. Lloyd Kelly was the owner of the business, had purchased that at the time. He was the only bid for a hundred bucks, and the city, the city went ahead and sold that to him. Okay? But there never was a deed to the property. I'm not sure how they transferred everything, but, uh...
It's not clear. They just took possession.
Imagine that.
To, just to clear the, clear the title issue, um, the purchasers are requesting just a quick claim deed from the city.
Do we have that motion? Several seconds? Roll call.
Wolfman, yep. Reese.
Yes.
Thank you.
Yes.
Mueller.
Yes.
Okay, seventeen twenty-seven, our investment policy.
Our investment policy. It starts on page thirteen. Yeah, just know that this is a, this is a model investment policy from the state. And then, all that we've really done to the model is to, um, insert the city of Lakeview in certain spots. So it's, it's gonna tell you that certain types of investments are permissible, certain types are not. You know, fact of the matter is, we, we don't invest money. We haven't invested money before. We have invested money in, uh, just buying a couple CDs, and that's as much as we've ever done. We've never had any city money invested outside of the two local banks. So, um, but, we had, we had to have this policy in place. This was one of the things that came out of our last annual exam. Is to make sure that we would get this policy in place, and then this was the, the suggested model policy. Um, I'm gonna go through and highlight just a few things. It starts on page thirteen. We're delegating authority about investments, and that, you'll see that that resides with the treasurer, and that's me. Uh, the city clerk is also the treasurer in Lakeview. And, uh... Next page talks about how anybody that we work with, second paragraph down, about, we would, we would establish the system of internal controls and investment practices that are, are really based off of one, two, three, four, invest that. So these internal controls apply to folks who invest, advise, direct, or act in a fiduciary capacity for the city. So, those same internal controls would apply. It says, "A bank, a savings and loan association, or credit union providing only depository services shall not be required to provide an audited financial and related reports on the internal control." And then it also stipulates the amount of bond. The city has bonded employees here for five thousand dollars. Objective of, of the policy are one, two, three, in this order, safety, liquidity, and return. So, those were the, the, uh, three priorities in that order, so returns never, never the highest priority, safety is. Talking about prudent, last, uh, last pair, uh, last sentence, "The treasurer shall consider the role that the investment or deposit plays within the portfolio, and the investment objectives that are, that are stated above there." Those three, safety, liquidity, and return. Then we get to the main part of the, of the policy, about which types of instruments are eligible for investment. So, we can invest in interest-bearing savings accounts, which we do. You know, so we have most of our money in, in interest-bearing, actually checking account, or a money market account. Okay? We could purchase the next bullet down, obligations of the, of the United States government. We can purchase CDs, which we, which we have done. We can invest in IPAT, the Iowa Public Agency Investment Trust, which we have, we have not done. And we can buy prime bankers' acceptances, or we can buy commercial paper, which we have never done, because I have no idea what it is. I don't see us doing that. Um, and then, so you get the, the assets would not be invested in the trading of securities, so those just are not permissible. And then, uh, then investing in, uh, returns, uh, investing in an investment where the agent makes money based upon the return. You wouldn't be able to do that. That the more returns, the more the agent gets paid. Section seven on page sixteen talks about maturity limits, limitations, and it's talking about the investment of operating funds, so we, we would never invest operating funds for more than three-hundred-and-ninety-seven days. And then, also then, uh, you can invest these non-operating funds for longer than that, but they still have to have maturities that are consistent with the, the needs of the city. Section eight does talk about diversification, and again, talks about prime bankers' acceptances and commercial paper, which we're not doing. But we do need to keep diversified strategy based on those three things on the top of page seventeen, portfolio maturities, liquidity practices, and then risk. So those are things that would be considered in our, in our investments. Section nine just talks about safekeeping and custody. And that if we have physical assets in the second paragraph, that they're held by a third-party custodian, which we do not have those physical assets. Ethics in conflict of interest, that if, if we would have investments at a place in which any of us has activities of more than fifty thousand dollars personally, that just needs to be disclosed. So I would tell you, I have my mortgage at Farmer State Bank. Uh, reporting, that, that we would submit an investment report, and that's actually included in our monthly financial reports every, every month. Section twelve talks about reviewing this policy once every three years.
Crystal clear.
So what do you wanna, so what are you looking for? To make a move to invest, or why do we want to do that if everything we seem to, since I've been on the council, seems to be making some money, but we seem to have money in the bank, so...
Sure, you know, but it's just, this will be a motion just to approve the policy. Okay?
Because we need, we need a copy of the policy on hand.
We gotta have the policy.
'Cause we don't have a copy of that policy on hand.
Just a housekeeping deal.
'Cause, you know, practically speaking, it's not gonna change the way we know how to invest.
Well, I mean, that's what I was looking at, it's not the change.
Pardon me?
Do we raise the limits here then to...
That'll be the next one.
The next one.
Your second?
I'll second.
Roll call.
Okay, Reese.
Yes.
Moller.
Yes.
Wolman.
Yep.
Steinkin.
Okay, seventeen twenty-eight, naming official depositories.
Yeah, this, you know, that's the name of the resolution, is to name official depositories. We actually do this every two years when we see the new council. This will come back again in a couple months again. But the rationale behind doing this now again is from that, from our annual exam, where we were cited for exceeding our self-imposed bank limitations. We, we had imposed a limitation of deposits on any bank of two million dollars, and we had exceeded that from time to time at Farmer State Bank. And then the answer to that is just to raise the, to raise the limit, and this would propose to raise it to three million dollars. And we really do need to consider doing that, largely because of the, the lagoon project, and we'll be transferring large amounts of money in and out, and we'll again occasionally exceed this, the two million dollar limit.
I'll make the motion. Who is it?
Resolution seventeen twenty-eight, second?
I'll second it.
Roll call.
Moller.
Yes.
Steinkin.
Yes.
Wolman.
Yep.
Reese.
Yes.
Okay, seventeen twenty-nine is extending our revitalization plan.
Right. So this, as we discussed at the previous council meeting, this would extend the tax abatement program. Okay? Didn't make any changes to it, didn't propose to make any changes to it at all. This would just extend as is and extends it for another ten years. We do need to hold a public hearing before we could do that. So that's all that the resolution does here is, is sets dates for public hearing. Public hearing date would be December eighteenth, second, second council meeting in December.
Do we have that motion?
So move.
Second?
I'll second it.
Roll call.
Moller.
Yes.
Reese.
Yes.
Steinkin.
Yes.
Wolman.
Yep.
Okay, bad news on the municipal advisor.
Not really good news.
I couldn't find any good in that.
I didn't either.
Uh, that memo from, from our municipal advisor starts on page twenty-two. And I'd asked him for update. I want him to take a look at this periodically and see where we're sitting about how we're generating revenue to be able to pay for the lagoon project. We have told, had told the public, we are going to have rate increases five years, twelve and a half percent each year. And we have started to implement that. They mentioned in the memo, we started it in two thousand and thirteen, we didn't start till a couple years later. Started in two thousand and fifteen. So we've implemented in fifteen, sixteen, and seventeen. Okay? So we're three years into that, where we had told the public we're increasing twelve and a half percent per year. The revenues did not match that twelve and a half percent increase. Okay? And that's largely because the, the increases were stipulated, Beenstrom and Kim in the original study had actually laid out the rates, about what the rates would be for the, for the next five years. So, and they said it'd be twelve and a half percent every year. Well, it's not. It's twelve and a half percent the first year, and then it's a constant increase in the, in the rates from then on out, but the percentage is always a little bit less. So it didn't manage to keep up over time with, with that twelve and a half. So you can see what the, what the numbers were. The last three years been eight percent, nine point one four, and eleven point one percent. So we can take a look at, at page...
But that's actual, right?
These are actual.
That's actual, the eight, and eight, and nine, and eleven.
Yep, those are actual.
So it's coming up by the last one already then, by eleven percent instead of twelve point five, right?
Yep, yep. Just a couple things on, on page twenty-three to point out, and this is the debt schedule about what the, what the proposed debt schedule likely looks at. And I just want to show you the total payments, so you look at middle of the page, right at the column called total P and I. So we have total principal and interest payments, and the top two are what we're still currently paying on the, on the debt issuance for the, for the plant. And we have paid about eighty-two, eighty-three thousand dollars a year. Okay? When we get our lagoon debt service started, you see what happens. It pops up consistently at two hundred and ninety-one, two hundred and ninety-two thousand dollars a year. So that'll be the amount of the debt service. So we need to continue to, to raise those revenues sufficient to, to pay that. Then on page twenty-four, I guess just know that this is kind of the historical recap of all of our expenses and revenue, and that, that shows you where we've been on that. And yours aren't in color, but the, the bottom shaded area, I want to point that out to you about the three bottom lines, revenue available for debt service, and the fiscal year debt service, and then the debt service coverage. And those are, those are the important numbers that we need to get to. So it's gonna tell you how much revenue we do have available for debt service, it's gonna tell you how much we pay for that year. And that debt service coverage for SRF loans, the debt service coverage always has to be one point one. So we gotta, we gotta have a hundred and ten percent of revenues available to pay the debt. It's a hundred, a hundred and ten percent of what the debt is. And you see that for, in the past, we've always had plenty of coverage on that. And swing to the next page though, and continue to look at the bottom line, where for eighteen and nineteen, we're, we're not paying that high amount of debt service yet, so our debt service coverage is good, but you get to twenty, and then right around twenty, twenty-one, twenty-two, we actually do not meet that one point one coverage. Okay? Now, and there, there will be some things that we can do to assure that we do, and some of it deals with the, oh, just a few lines up there, we got the WWTP project fund balance. That's just money that's in a set-aside account, and that'll be available there to, to assist with payments. Or you can look at doing some minor restructuring of, of the, of the debt so that we back, you know, put more repayment on the back end. But for those years, we actually struggled then to meet coverage. But then back to the top of the, of the page, where we're at two thousand and eighteen and two thousand and nineteen, and again, looking at those percentages, so it'd be twelve and a half percent rate increase. This is, they're calling it the assumed revenue increase, okay? The rate increases that we would pursue over the next years would be that twelve and a half percent, so that it generates that amount of money. So it'll be actual twelve percent increases. The really bad news out of this is that our proposed five-year schedule to raise enough money to pay would look like we would have a sixth year on there at twelve and a half percent. Now that's, we would look at that as we get closer to that date, but that certainly looks like what's gonna happen.
I don't think it's better than raising the percentage to have another year.
It's, it just extends, yeah, extends the rate increases out into the future.
'Cause I don't know, we, you know, you got a lot of...
What's to say that that won't happen again?
You know, it's, it is the best estimate of the, of the model, you know? 'Cause we've also looked at consumption, because you're wondering, we keep raising sewer rates, does water consumption go down? And what we find out is that water consumption has not gone down any significant amount. And we've, we have, over the past years, seen, now it ends up being small incremental increases in the number of watering meters that go out. There's a few more watering meters that go out every year, because if you have a watering meter, you can water your outside yard and, and you pay for the water, but you don't pay for sewer. So we've seen those numbers increase just a little bit. But, you know, it's not, hasn't been dramatic. We, the difference this, this year is estimated to be about two hundred and ninety thousand gallons, but really that's less than two thousand dollars of revenue. So it's...
So what does a meter's cost now?
Oh, two hundred and fifty bucks for a watering meter, is that about right now, Bill?
Yeah. I think that's what it costs me when I put mine in, yeah.
I'm just leaving it up to the good Lord.
Oh, okay.
You know, I look at this, and we, we don't have a lot of choice.
Now, yeah.
No, but it's very discouraging if you think that it could happen again. You could just say, okay, now all of a sudden we've got to do a seventh year, you know, and we gotta, I mean, it's like...
It's not gonna be perceived very well by the public.
No, it's not.
You told them five, now you tell them six.
Right.
And, and when you keep seeing these, you know, they maybe haven't cut back so much yet, but you got two more years, and now you're gonna put three more years on it, and you keep tacking that twelve and a half percent, and they keep looking at that sewer bill, it is high.
Yeah.
They're gonna start noticing it more all of the time.
Just don't have a lot of choice, unless the bids come in really cheap.
We will, we will know that, you know, certainly by that time.
Then we can decide.
Sure. I mean, this, it's, it'll be an annual decision about what we're gonna do to continue to raise rates. For now, you know, it'll get presented to you starting in January again, I think, about doing this rate increase, and it'd be another twelve and a half percent that would go into effect in March.
Year what does that will be?
This would be your, we would be implementing year four.
What's the average sewer bill for average homeowner?
Any idea? I can't remember what ours is.
I'd hate to tell you, Dave. I can figure it out, it's about thirty-five hundred gallons worth of water. But I'd have to, I would have to do some, some checking, I know, I hate to tell you off the top of my head.
So a twelve and a half percent increase would be...
You know, it ends up being, it is, you know, let's say it's three dollars a month, you know? But it's three dollars this year, and then it's six dollars next year, and then it's, gets to be ten dollars by year three.
So, so then you're looking at like twelve dollars, right?
Yeah, it keeps, you know, it keeps adding up over time, sure, sure.
I mean, for a year four, you know? Three, six, nine, twelve, ain't that the...
True, that's true.
Well, we don't have any choice.
Yeah, and I...
I understand that, I just think that it's gonna get harder and harder for some of those people to...
Oh, absolutely.
You know, it...
People are really, are starting to notice it, 'cause we get a handful of, of comments about the bill now, but some of them are just now realizing that sewer costs more than water. And it's been that way for several years, but it's getting to be enough of a disparity that people really know.
So we'd have been better off maybe to raise everything a little over six percent, and water and sewer?
Um, I guess I don't know that I would say that, Terry, 'cause you, you want each of the utilities to pay for the appropriate expenses, you know? And it's a sewer expense.
I mean, the bill would have been about the same.
Bill would have been, right.
Schematics.
Yeah.
Wherever you wanna put it.
I just saw it.
Okay. That's all the good news we can handle tonight.
Sorry to be the bearer of bad news, but I tell you what, I do not want to get into the end of year five and find out that we're, we're not where we needed to be.
We're supposed to look ahead.
I understand that.
Okay, move on, we, this is a council vacancy on a poor night, but I guess it's, we gotta do it.
Yeah, yeah, and we get a...
We gotta decide what we're gonna, our options are.
The, so the, the council would, would discuss how to, how to fill Jerry's vacancy. And the decisions would be that, that you could choose to have a special election right away, or you could choose to fill the vacancy by appointment. And if you would choose to fill the vacancy by appointment, we would give some public notice about this, allow people to express, express interest in filling the position, and then, then the council would, at some point, go ahead and make an appointment. That appointment becomes effective immediately. The appointment serves until the next regular city election. So we had to confirm that of whether it was the next election or the next city election, but for sure it's the next city election, so it coincides with the end of the term. So this would be the election in two thousand and nineteen. But yeah, that, I guess those are, would be the choices, you know, about holding an election or appointing somebody. Timing-wise, you know, if people are interested in, and they would like to have their name in, they can certainly let us know. You know, I've talked with councillor Steinkin about whether he'd be interested to be reappointed. And in order to facilitate that, if, if this would happen, it would be, I think, in the city's best interest that you would not make an appointment until the first meeting in January. Okay? Whiteys off, off of the council then officially at that time, could be reappointed, and then would continue on. But then again, there could be other people who may show interest. Okay? But then there also is, after the date the appointment is made, there's a fourteen-day window when the public can come in and request a, a special election. If they would petition for a special election, that's those handwritten numbers in there, it's fifty-four votes, or excuse me, fifty-four people on a petition to come in and, and request a special election.
So are they able to do that before January then?
Yeah, they could.
If that's what they want, to just have a special election and...
Yep.
Before we even...
Special election usually cost?
Last time we paid for our regular election, it was a little over thirteen hundred dollars. Now, here's, we got, we gotta give public notice, and this would be a proposed public notice.
This is February second.
Good catch, Mayor.
This is January second.
It's January. Thank you.
So, so people have until one-thirty on December twenty-ninth to either have those fifty-four signatures?
That would just be...
Or their name in the hat, or...
Yeah, this, that...
Combination in there.
That twenty-ninth is the, is the deadline to have your name in the hat.
For appointment possibilities.
Yep, 'cause then there still is the fourteen days after the appointment.
Right, and then January, first meeting in January, we consider the appointment?
Yes.
Or consider if they have, somebody has fifty-four signatures, we consider that at that time.
I guess I would like to see an appointment made.
So we'd have to have that motion tonight to make the appointment, that's it.
I'll make that motion.
And really, I think that is the, just the motion is to, the only part of the motion is to fill it with a, by, by appointment, 'cause you're not determining whom, you're just saying that's the process. Okay?
We have a second?
Second.
Roll call.
Okay, Moller.
Yes.
Wolman.
Yes.
Thank you. Thank you. Reese.
Okay, City Minister to report.
One second while we're on that yet. How does, how would somebody show interest in being appointed? It says they just got to submit something in writing, and that would just be, I have an interest in being appointed? Or would, are you looking for any further information from that?
No, not at all.
Very good.
Submitted to you.
Yeah, it comes to me.
Okay, you have a City Minister to report?
Yeah. A little update on, we had a board of adjustment meeting earlier right before this, and this was the request from the Seabricks to have the two miniature horses. And then they also had a second variance request that would allow for the use of corrugated metal siding on their new building. They had proposed to put a new garage slash storage building in their backyard. Now, they've since bought two-plus acres of land to the north of their house. And so, this garage is out, you know, kind of more in the middle of those two acres, and that would be the idea, they would store a bunch of stuff in the garage, but that's also the housing then for these two, for the two horses. The Board of Adjustment did grant that variance to allow for two miniature horses. Okay? But with some pretty tight restrictions, that it is these two specific miniature horses, and they said they're papered, and we will actually have the papers to identify these specific horses, and that it's for those two so long as the Seabricks continue to own them, and the Seabricks continue to own this 2.8 acres of land. So, anyway, the Board of Adjustment has passed that variance request. That comes to the City Council, come to the council then next time, and would come to you as a resolution to approve this, and the council would get the chance to either approve this variance, or the other action is to remand it back to the Board of Adjustment. Okay? There is no disapproval of it, but if you would, your only action could be to remand it back, and they would reconsider it. The Board of Adjustment would reconsider it once, and then their decision is final. The other variance, though, variance request was for corrugated siding, and that variance request was denied.
So, there's nothing we do now then?
I'm not telling.
It'll come to the next city council meeting. Dave's going to be drafting the variance resolution. Annually, we get together with the fire department and the township trustees to review fire operations and consider their budget request. We would propose to do that on December 11th, Monday, December 11th, second Monday of the month. Does that work for everybody?
Yes. For me, it does.
Okay.
Eleven?
Eleven, yeah.
Yeah.
It actually, we will have, we have community club meeting that night where it's the social first, and then we come to the, to the fire meeting at seven o'clock.
Nothing like priming the punk.
There you go. On the splash pad, we have received the items for the splash pad, and the contractor's not been to town yet. They propose to come to town starting next Monday.
It's going to start getting cold.
It's going to start getting cold. Just my last thing is Sack County League meeting. We will do the annual Sack County League Christmas party, and of course, every, all the councils are certainly invited, and we usually bring spouses to that. And the date is different, though, than what's on your flyer. So, it will be Thursday, December 7th. It's the first Thursday this time.
December 7th.
Yep. So, we'll talk about that yet at the next meeting, but we'll get that on your calendars if we can all attend that, that'd be great. That's it.
That's it. Okay, we're going to go into a closed session, but before we do, I'd ask the council to allow Vicky to stay. She's going to be part of this $4.6 million. I'd like her to hear this, if that's all right. If anybody has objections.
She is going to be a part of it.
It's not all right?
No.
It's not allowed?
Yeah, it can't be a closed session with anybody.
Vicky, I guess you can't stay.
I can't stay then.
You can hold a closed session if you include in the motion that that person can stay.
What's that?
You can hold a closed session with that person if you include it in the motion that that person can stay.
Really?
I don't know.
Well, you go to a lot of meetings, you probably know.
He says not.
Well. I follow the thing for you.
Pretty close.
He'd be about the only one that would object too, I think, if we did include her. So, if it's with you, that's fine with me.
So, we just need a motion to include her? I'll make the motion to include Vicky in the closed session.
Okay. Roll call.
She is going to be a part of it.
I tried to get you out.
There is no action.
Next deal.
And you can't stay. I don't want it.
Roll call.
Two bucks for you.
Okay. Moller.
Yes.
Thank you. Woltman.
Uh, yeah.
Reese.
Yes. I'm going to go here first.
All right.